All right, and we'll have a roll call of members. David Kent, is he here?
It doesn't look like we have him online quite yet.
Okay. Stephanie Halter is here. Peter Julia.
Present.
Malik Hammond.
Present.
Tom McGlaughlin.
Here.
Great. All right, so with four present, do we need to alert people that we don't have a full quorum with five?
Yeah, we can let them know unless David joins, we can just let them know that if they would like to wait until a future meeting to see if they can get five, that's their right. It would still take a vote of three to pass.
Okay, that sounds great.
He just joined, it looks like.
Oh, great, that's good news. So, I will continue that roll call of members for David Kent. Do we get to see his photo up there, or is that not possible?
I'm here.
There we go, great. Thanks, Stephen.
Sunshine down there, or what?
Actually, it's kind of cloudy right now, but that's okay.
That's good.
It was pretty sunshiny up here today, luckily. Welcome.
No, thank you.
And then, the first item on the agenda is election of officers, the Chair and the Vice Chair. Do we have any nominations for Chair? I'd nominate David Kent again.
Second.
Third.
Would David accept that nomination?
Yes, I will.
Okay, and a Vice Chair, any nominations for Vice Chair?
Stephanie Halden.
Second.
Okay, and all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Right.
Take a vote on that, or what?
Yep.
Do we have to take a vote on that?
I just said.
Oh, you did?
Yep.
Oh, aye.
Aye. That's okay. Sorry, I must have moved through that panel quickly. All right, and then, thank you, David, for serving as the Chair again.
Thank you. I appreciate the honor that the town bestows on me.
So, the next item on the agenda is the review of the minutes from January 7th. Is there any edits to the minute meeting?
I didn't see any.
Avery's been doing a really great job.
Absolutely.
I move the way except the minutes is presented.
Great.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye. Great, so the minutes pass. Okay, so that moves us to our first item on the agenda for applications and public hearings, right? So, this first item on the agenda is a special exception, extension request for the end of Page Street. So, we have an application from Byco LLC, so I'll open up the public hearing for that and invite anybody forward who wants to speak on behalf of that application.
You got the applicant spec, yeah.
Applicant, want to come forward?
Sure. Dale Blacky, Byco, looking to have an extension on the rule that was done two years ago, a 12-month extension.
Okay. Any questions for the applicant?
Any changes at all?
No, sir.
No changes to the fences, only to the actual buildings inside.
Correct. Possibly. Yeah, it was approved two years ago, and it's been added.
You've gotten some delays, we understand that. Yes, yes. Any other questions for the applicant?
Are there butters here for the applicant?
I was going to ask that after.
Yeah, remind me, this one had the gate.
It has a gate at the end of Page Street.
Yeah, yeah, I remember it. Well done.
Yeah, I think most of us were here when this initially came through. Yeah. Well, if there's no questions for the applicant, then I'm going to say thank you, and then invite anybody else forward that'd like to speak in favor of the application, anybody from the public? Anybody want to come forward? Come forward, that'd be great.
Greg Patton, 25 Page Street. Not really in favor or against, just, we requested an eight-foot fence for the storage facility, and we're going to continue to request an eight-foot fence for the new plans. So, and, we don't care if it's a, you know, a privacy fence chain link, or if it's a white vinyl, but just something to maintain a little bit of privacy in our yard.
This says six-foot fence.
Right, that's what the approval was for, was for a six-foot fence initially. Right.
Yeah. And, and we had asked for an eight-foot fence on the property line, and we're still asking for the same.
Still asking, okay. Have you brought that forward to Planning Board?
Um, not yet, not till the, till this moves forward.
Okay.
All right, and remind me, but I believe you're the Director Butter, correct? That's, just wanted to clarify.
So.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else that'd like to speak? Towards this application? Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing on that, and then, Board members? Comment our discussion?
Stephanie?
Yes.
I believe we only approved a six-foot fence.
That is correct.
For the, for the front.
I think the whole fence was six feet.
We don't need any.
Because it, they can do a four-foot fence, and when they brought it up for, my recollection was that it was a six-foot fence all around. Does that sound right, David?
It, I remember eight foot on the side for the privacy as requested.
I remember that being asked for, I don't remember that being something that we, I think that at the hearing, it was said that they, that kind of came up, that they said that they'd be open to a bigger fence, right? We were concerned about it being too high, because really, you know, our zoning laws say that it's only allowable to go up to a four-foot fence, right? So, we were trying to keep the fence low, but the Butters had said that they would be open to it going higher, right? But I think that's, I don't know that that's for us to, to rule on at this time, I think we're just ruling on approving an extension of what's already been approved, and we don't need to do a finding of fact. Does that sound right, David?
Yes, it does.
Yes, yeah.
We've only, we've only, as I understand, we've only been asked to renew what already has been approved.
Correct, correct. So, I don't know that we could rule on the going up higher, but I, you know, do encourage the...
Stephanie, the neighbors would have to be notified, and a new hearing would have to be held.
Correct, to go up higher than the six-foot, yes. And that'd be a separate application, yeah. Okay. So, any, any concerns about extending this for a year?
I think precedent has it that we generally will approve if the people have run into difficulties complying, but a second extension is often not given.
Correct, that's what I think is generally how that's handled, yeah.
Would you like to make a motion?
Sure.
Make a motion that we approved the extension for Dale's fence?
Any second?
Seconded.
Great. All right, any further discussion? All right, I'll call for a vote on approving the extension, the extension for the special exception granted two years ago. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, great, thank you so much for coming in. You've got one more year. Okay, and so, let's move on to the second application before us tonight, we have a special exception application, the Pine Gate MH Cooperative, and this one is for a solar array as an accessory used to an existing manufactured housing park. The special exception is required to permit more than three accessory structures on the property, and to permit a fence over six feet in height. All right, so, I'll open up the public hearing and hear from the applicant.
Good evening, Zoning Board, thank you for your time. I was informed a few weeks ago by the Planning Board that this used to be a courthouse, so hope you won't judge me too harshly.
Could you state your name for the record?
My name is Carlson Swafford.
Great, thank you, Carlson.
I'm an attorney with the Energy Clinic at the Vermont Law and Graduate School, here tonight on behalf of Pine Gate Cooperative. The Energy Clinic, on behalf of Pine Gate, and in collaboration with Resident-Owned Communities of New Hampshire, submitted an application to the Department of Energy of New Hampshire for a grant to develop a community solar array benefiting low and moderate income residents in Plymouth. The Department of Energy granted a $400,000 award for the Pine Gate Cooperative to build a 92.4 KW community solar array, and the cooperative chose Barrington Power, who's, Ted Van Zant is here with us today to engineer, design, and construct the project, and today we're here to appear before you all and request a special exception to the zoning ordinance for the accessory structures in excess of three, and the fence whose height is in excess of six feet.
Okay. Did you want to take questions from the Board members?
Joseph, do we have a plan there?
We do, yep. If any members of the zoning board don't have a copy, that's...
This one or the big one?
They're both the same plans, so if people want a larger or a smaller copy. Thank you.
Engineer.
All right, David, that's the best I can do, I'll hold it up for you.
Endeavor to share this on Zoom, so we can, the folks at home can see it as well.
Oh, that's nice, thank you.
That's coming through fine for people.
Wow, nice. Hey, let's just give you a subsidy for everybody in the park.
Pardon?
Will this get a subsidy for everybody in the park?
So, this project will be, yes, providing a direct benefit to the cooperative members in the form of lot rent credits. So, I don't know if you're familiar with Resident-Owned Community model, but essentially, they form a cooperative entity that they all collectively own and manage, and they own the structure that they live in, but they all together own the property, they pay lot rent to the cooperative. The electricity sales to New Hampshire Electric Co-op will be collected by the cooperative for a year, and then annualized per participating household to reduce their lot rent payments.
See, are your lots on the street off of Fairgrounds Road, too, or is it just the lots, the existing lots?
I'm not familiar with the Fairground Road.
Which, just before you turn on Beach Hill, there's a right, and this, I don't know if that's sold together with the rest of the land, or...
I don't know if it is.
I don't think so.
No.
Oh, okay.
And this paved drive on here on this map, is that, that's the road that goes up into the Pine Gate, or the dump?
Dump.
That's the dump. So, this is, isn't there a house there, because it says existing shed? This is where I was a little bit confused, isn't that a house?
This is just in between, there is a house, and then there is some undeveloped land with a sort of gravel trail through it, in between that last house on the right and the entrance to the, to the transfer station, so this is...
So, the house is over here?
The house would be just south of this property on the map, and I did get a message here that the, when the time is appropriate, that one of the Butters asked me to share with the Board about that.
Oh, that'd be great, okay. Yes, thank you, Joseph, I'll remember that. Okay, I was just trying to get my bearings, because I, you know, everybody knows about the dump, right? So, we all know this, this area.
Recycling center.
Recycling center.
You're not supposed to make that mistake.
Transfer station.
Sorry, I'm sorry, recycling center. Questions, do people have questions for Mr., I know your first name is Carson?
Carlson.
Carlson? Carlson? Thank you.
Looks like a great idea.
So, this isn't going to be directly energizing the houses in the cooperative, it's going to be basically just pulled into the Electric Co-op?
Into the New Hampshire Electric Cooperative on the local grid. Yes, sir.
Okay.
New Hampshire's a net meter state. Goes directly...
Yeah, but it's not going to be, sorry about that, it's not going to be into a battery storage conductor, whatever, for the actual community, and then overflow goes to NHCC. What's my question?
Yep.
And so, you got a grant from it, and you think your grant's safe, you think that's going to come through?
So, the grant that was awarded was under the Renewable Energy Fund from the New Hampshire Renewable Portfolio Standard.
Oh, good.
Which is funded by alternative compliance payments for public utilities that haven't met their renewable energy goals, so it's not federal money, it's safe.
Excellent.
I did note, in the New Hampshire Legislature had encouraged municipal governance to encourage energy efficient patterns of development, and to permit installation of solar energy systems where it would not be unreasonable interference with public health, safety, or welfare. I've also drafted a brief memo that I can submit to the zoning board that kind of details my findings on point, but briefly, the standard for an accessory building or use in the Plymouth zoning ordinance is a building or use that's subordinate or customarily incidental to the main building use, and also that any fence over six feet high shall require a special exception, but that fence shall be exempt from the foregoing requirements if it's used for reasonable safety purposes governed by state statutes or local rules. When I look to what is considered customary and incidental, look into Consumer Affairs reports, look into the Renewable and Appropriate Energy Laboratory at UC Berkeley, and a number of other authorities, we see just a growing number every year of residential solar, and also of community solar. And while this property is considered residential, it's also by nature of the manufactured housing park and its present use, a community residential space. I also note that the New Hampshire Department of Energy had adopted by reference the National Electric Safety Code, which had recommended that metal fences, when used to enclose electric supply stations, shall have a height of not less than 2.13 meters or seven feet. And the New Hampshire Department of Energy incorporated that by reference in Administrative Rules, Section 300. While this rule only applies to public electric utilities, we believe that it represents the best practice with respect to enclosing energized electric equipment, and so...
And so, I'm sorry, go ahead.
So, you got this on about a neighbor lot, but it really having boundaries in there.
The, yeah, it's a 1.27...
1.31.
1.31, was it?
Is that a real lot, or is it...
It is a separate lot from the manufactured housing lot.
Correct, it's separate, but I will note that it has been merged since the application was filed, so this is now a contiguous lot with the other two parcels, it's now one, I should say, with the manufactured housing underlying the property.
Oh, it is.
Just to clarify, the three structures, is that, is that the three solar arrays?
Yes.
Each one is considered a separate structure?
Yes.
Okay, so the shed that's there, isn't going to be there any longer?
One of the sheds is going to be removed, the other would still be used.
The other would still be used, so it's adding those three, so, adding those three, but still using one of the other sheds. But that one wouldn't be, because it looks like it overlaps at where it goes.
Two separate special exceptions, correct? One for the height of the fence, and one for the additional accessory?
He's making the case that he doesn't need a special exception for the height of the fence, because he's got some state break that says that that goes along with the project, if it's for safety purposes, and something like that. Isn't really that said?
Taking it into consideration, not that it's not necessary, though.
Right, but they're taking it into consideration that it's for safety.
I see, okay.
Yeah, I think that's just the argument, I think we still have to have a special exception.
Because Pine Gate's not a public utility?
Correct, yeah, but thank you for clarifying.
Great.
Other kinds of questions that we might have for Mr. Swafford, right? Did I get that right?
Yes. I don't notice on the plan where the electrical gear will be, or where the connection to the grid is. Could you explain that connection and where that equipment will be?
I might invite Ted Van Zant with Barrington Power up for the electrical.
Questions, great, come on up.
Hi.
Hi.
Can I point to that?
Yes, you sure can.
I'm getting my bearings, so, there will be a new utility pole placed approximately somewhere there, that's about right, yep, depending on where the Co-op puts it, and that'll be our interconnection point, and then we'll trench over to somewhere behind this front array where all the electrical gear will go.
Does the gear go under the array?
It goes on the backside of the array, there's like, you know...
No pad, no structure, no cabinet?
Correct, there's just the posts that hold up the array, we run Unistrut between those posts and hang everything on that, so the inverters will hang on that, and then out, out front, there will be a disconnect and a meter for the Co-op.
One point, just to, will that meter be behind the fence, or within the interior of the fence, or on the outside of the fence for access?
I can't answer it 100%, but at the Town of Plymouth Array that we just built, they allowed us to put it behind the fence just for security, so we will advocate for that with the Fire Chief and the Co-op, and they'll probably agree that it's a smart thing to do.
And the six-foot fence here, why do you think it's necessary? Could we, could we talk a little bit about that, because I've seen some other solar, or eight-foot fence, sorry, from first to second. So, the eight-foot fence, why is it necessary here?
That's a great question.
I know that it's electrical, but I've seen other solar arrays without an eight-foot fence around them.
Yes, so there's two, what we need to do is we need to protect the public from being able to walk up and grab a wire and disconnect and get shot. So, there's two ways to do that, you can put a fence around it, which is really the safest way for overall safety, or you can cover the back of the array so that the wires are not available to the general public.
Okay.
With an array of this size, in the location it is, I recommend a fence because it's just going to keep people away in general, you know, the edges of the panels are sharp, if kids were to play in there, they could, you know, get cut, and generally, just want to keep people away. The important thing about the fence we use, and you can view it at the Town of Plymouth Array, maybe you've already seen it, it's an agricultural fence, and it's much nicer looking than a chain link fence, so this is not an eight-foot chain link fence, this is an agricultural fence, it's like four-inch pressure-treated posts with this, you know, big wire mesh that goes around it. And so, the, the electric code is that we have to be seven feet tall, so there is no seven-foot tall fence available to us, so, instead of a six-foot, we go to the eight-foot, that's what's available to us, sorry.
Other questions?
When you're speaking of the Plymouth Array, you're talking about the one next to the airport, right, across from the airport?
That's right.
I've seen photos of it, but I haven't been out to it. I've seen the one behind Star King, and that one just has a wooden fence.
That has the mesh behind it.
Because it bumps up against a residential.
It's, yeah, aesthetically nicer than this, but this is going to be, you know, kind of hidden in its own little lot, so...
Yeah, it is a little bit more removed, yeah. All right, we might call you back up. Thank you.
One last thing, I'm assuming, based on everything you've done, all the shade assessments and whatnot, just by the way of reading through it earlier, as far as the vegetation for screening, the visual aesthetic of it, being able to see it from the roadway or whatnot, you mentioned having some barriers, and just how is that going to work in with the actual shading of the arrays?
It's a great question, thank you. The intention is to leave trees along here for visual screening, so these trees will shade the array a little bit, but the trees over here are far enough away and have a size and height that they're not really going to shade this too much, you get a little bit of shading in the front row in the winter, but these back two will be wide open, and then the, over here as well, there's going to be a little bit of shading in the morning from those trees, but overall, it's going to get, you know, at least an 85%...
Exposure.
Exposure, which, kind of take what you can get, like if we cut all those trees down over here, and all these trees down over here, it'd be better, but we're siding with aesthetics.
Thank you.
Stephanie?
Yes, Stephen?
Who maintains the grounds, because over time, bushes and trees would start to grow between these things, who maintains that?
The owners.
Property owners, yeah.
So, they got to mow it at least once a year, typically is what happens, mow it and weed whack around it once a year, so that big brush doesn't grow up.
Thank you.
Good question.
Sure.
Peter?
Yeah. Is the image, the plan image shown on Sheet C2, is that a reasonable graphical representation? Are there really three double-panel arrays?
Is this Sheet C?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, that is exactly how we proposed to build it, yes.
So, what is the maximum height of any one of those three arrays?
It would be very similar to what's over Plymouth, which is about, the airport's about 12 feet, no more than 12 feet.
All right, let's try it again. Thank you so much, Ted.
Sitting over here.
Are there anybody that wants to speak in favor of this application, please come on up?
Good evening.
Could you state your name for the record?
Yes, my name is Jeannie Oliver, I'm the Vice President of Rock New Hampshire, Resident-owned Communities New Hampshire, at the New Hampshire Community Loan Fund. I just want to say that we support this project, we work with 151 resident... I just want to say that we support this project, we work with 151 resident-owned communities in New Hampshire, this will be the fourth resident-owned community, community solar project. These are really important projects for these communities, they're majority low moderate-income households, and as you probably know, energy bills are a large component of people's expenses. This project is really acting in the same way as like a rooftop project would work for households of greater means, although it's not directly offsetting their electric bills by being hardwired into their homes, and there is an on-bill crediting for group net metering in the electric co-op's territory, it is going to be offsetting their, as Carlson said, their lot rents, they're distributing it in that way so that it doesn't count as income, and, you know, sometimes when you get additional income, that can send people off the benefits cliff, so these have been designed to really stabilize the living expenses in resident-owned communities, and really help them to build resilience. This particular community, they are very motivated to improve their community, they're doing a number of infrastructure projects as well, they, we work with these communities to provide technical assistance, I have one of my team members here who works directly in those communities, and so for the long-term management of their assets, they have support that they need to make sure that these are successful projects, so we're very excited about this project, about all of the community solar projects that we've been able to do so far, and I just wanted to come up here and put a plug in for it.
Great, thank you. Would anybody else like to come and speak in support of the application? All right, anybody want to come up and speak in opposition? Okay, and Joseph, we did have one comment that you wanted to share?
Yeah, I had David Goodwin, who is the property owner to the immediate south, that is the house that you can somewhat see on Plan C2, closest to the driveway, and he does not have any concerns about the solar or, or any of the proposed elements of the actual building, but he is concerned that if the access driveway is to be used more heavily for development traffic from the park, he's concerned about the proximity of the access road to his property line and possible impacts of headlights, so he asked if that were to become a more permanent road serving the park, if that entrance could be moved a bit further to the north. I'm not sure if that was a part of the plan, for that to become more utilized as an entrance or exit to the development, but that was his, that was his concern, no concerns about the solar itself, but specifically about the possibility of that driveway being used more heavily.
Okay, Ted?
Sure, thank you, that's a great question. Solar projects need very little maintenance, a project like this will have a pickup truck and one or two people show up once a year for about three hours to do maintenance on it, other than the park doing the mowing.
The clearing.
The construction will be, you know, obviously, there'll be a couple-month period when we're doing construction, but after that, it's very little maintenance.
Is, is that road going to be paved, or is that stay dirt?
No, it stays dirt.
It stays dirt, so it's not really going to be developed?
No, I mean, we would rather just leave it the way it is, because we don't, you know, it's, it's, it's a very small construction project and then incredibly little maintenance afterwards.
So it sounds like his concerns are?
Construction timeframe, morning to night, would you be working late at night?
No, the electricians tend to work from 7:00 to 3:30, so.
Thank you.
Any, any other questions? All right, I'll close on David, any questions?
This would require.
No, I'm fine, thank you.
Great.
Going, this one would require going before the planning board for all of the.
Probably, yeah.
Site approval and stuff like that, correct?
They did file, actually, a site plan review application with the planning board, which will be heard at their meeting of April 17th.
Or 17th, yes.
So I'm going to close the public session, the public hearing, and so this is just our time to deliberate. Okay, so, do people want to have any discussion, or do we want to move to findings of fact?
Stephanie, my concern would be that the, the access road is limited to the maintenance of the project, is that correct?
Correct.
Well, then I think that that should be a condition of the approval.
How do others feel about that? Any comment?
Well, it looks like it is a back road into the park, is that the way it is, or?
If I remember the picture.
It's just this little swirl here, right?
It seemed like it was just a.
Just that little swirl.
Small path.
Yeah, I know, but, I don't know what to say there.
Yeah, there's a photograph of it right here.
Yeah, yeah.
It's better than a Class 6.
We're in board discussions now, right?
We are in board discussion now, correct.
All right, I feel compelled to disclose that the professional firm I work for is presently under contract, not with Pine Gate, but with a couple federal agencies to help with some of the other improvements they were talking about, actually. So I've done some preliminary research regarding, not this parcel, but I was aware of the lot merger, so when it comes time to vote, I'll ask the applicant if they want me to recuse myself, or, the two really are not related, this is strictly, you know, a use and unrelated to what I'm doing, but I wanted to share with the board that I have some recent knowledge regarding.
This development?
The cooperative, correct, and because of that, as you said, Malick, this is a sort of a access road to a lot that I don't believe was ever developed, does not connect with the park, you cannot.
It doesn't connect to the park?
No, no.
Oh, okay, no, that's fine.
No, I mean, I think if you, if you had like a tractor or a truck, yeah, yeah, probably, but it's not a regularly navigated roadway.
Okay.
It's a dirt path.
They have one central artery and three roads off of it, and, or three traveled ways.
David, you still want to put a restriction on that if it's not used like that? Peter just said that it's just not connected to the park.
Well, I think, in, in all good faith, we have to represent the neighbor as well, and one of the conditions that we have is the effect on the neighborhood, and here a neighbor has brought, I think, a legitimate issue.
Yeah, I actually concur with David, I was only bringing up that I, I don't think it's a throughway, as it appears to be on the map.
Right.
You know, not regularly used, could it be, sure, could it be improved later?
Yeah.
Could be, but I think David's point to add a condition for this specific.
Because it is so close to the other property, yeah.
And because we had an abutter say something. Now, we do have the testimony of one of the applicant's team that these trees along the front edge were to be retained, to maximum extent practical, and reuse this current, for lack of better terms, curb cut, so unless they modified their plan, it would not satisfy the abutter's concern of relocating that access way northerly.
Yes.
I think the clear intent of this plan is to keep it that way in order to maintain their quote-unquote "natural buffer" or existing tree line.
Correct, that, that makes sense.
That's what I heard.
And to maximize the, the south-facing views, right?
Yep.
Because if they were to bring the road in a little further down.
I also, one of the reasons I respond, I, I own a solar way, I've had one for about four years, and unlike Mr. Van Sant, I haven't touched mine at all. No pickup shows up ever, the only thing I can say is, I did receive a letter recently that the town is now going to tax me for that array.
Wow, okay.
So I would advise, when you run your due diligence, to include the tax, that the town will probably assess you once you have this quote-unquote "asset."
Great, like a paved driveway.
Well, you know, homeowners do these things for the very same reason, to, you know, reduce costs.
Yeah.
Better for the environment, I mean, there's lots of reasons, not to get extra tax, but.
On an asset, yeah.
It seems diminishing, probably I'll be taxed near equivalently to my credits, so it's.
Whoa, really?
I'd be shocked, we all know the tax rate is high in this town, so I can't wait to see the assessment, and I will be forearmed and ready to.
So the, the co-op, co-op picks up this, New Hampshire Electric Co-op picks up this producer.
They do.
And they don't pay the upfront cost of the construction.
Oh, no.
And they don't have to pay the taxes on it either, but they get the energy.
Oh, yes.
As opposed to putting through the transmission lines and cost of power.
That's correct.
Well, that's pretty money.
Let's try not to get.
It's good for the co-op.
Yeah.
We shouldn't get too off-topic.
No, I'm sorry.
Let's keep it to the application. All right, so are there other aspects that people want to discuss about this application besides the road? Do we, do we want to vote on David's condition, or will we do that later, David? What do you think?
Findings of fact.
I'll accept whatever the board's view is, that's all.
Okay, well, I mean, if we move on to findings of fact, we could start with David's condition and, and make sure that everybody concurs with that condition, does that sound good? All right, so let's move on to findings of fact, and we can start with David's condition for approval, that the road is only for maintenance and access to the project, given its current location. Does anybody concur with that?
Yeah, I'd concur with that, yeah. And I, okay, and the, the array sits into the existing geography pretty nice.
Okay, which is on, it has here in the application as a 1.31 acre lot, but that's been merged with the 23.91 acres of the, the park. They are asking for two special exceptions, one to permit more than three accessory structures on a lot, and for an eight-foot fence, right, so do people feel comfortable doing the findings of fact for those together?
Sure.
I believe, I do.
Okay, great.
Three accessory structures are each row of these plus the fence, huh?
No.
The fences and.
Each one of these is a structure.
Those are the three additional structures.
Three structures, which is the limit, but then they also want to retain the shed.
Yeah. Other findings of fact?
It's going to benefit the neighborhood directly.
It meets the setbacks.
It meets, yeah. There is current and proposed retention of natural visual, visual barriers.
The, this is allowed by special exception, right, to have additional accessory units and to.
And the gas or the sewage.
And to have an eight-foot fence around that structure, that's allowed by special exception.
Stephanie, I have two.
Yes, Stephen?
For safety reasons, I believe the fence is needed for safety reasons.
Great. And your second?
As I recall the application, it said there's no reflective problem relative to the sun rays being broadcast somewhere else as a nuisance.
Great.
In a similar vein, this does not produce any noise.
Good. It doesn't seem like it's going to create any undue traffic on the roads, it's not going to require sewer or other kind of hookups, or any kind of plowing, or anything from the town, in terms of services.
That's good.
And it sounds like.
That's about six finding of facts, I think.
Yeah. Any others that people feel like compelled to state for the record for findings of fact?
We generally have one that says there isn't an abutter.
Oh, yes, the abutter's good.
Either for or against.
Correct.
We have really neither. We have an abutter that has stated a concern about access, but he also noted he wasn't, that's right, he was neutral, stated he was neutral.
Neutral.
I'd make a motion, we approve the findings of facts.
Second?
All in favor of the finding of facts?
Aye.
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 David?
Aye.
Aye? Okay, so the finding of facts are approved, so let's move to go through the special exception criteria. The proposed use shall be only those allowed in this ordinance by special exception?
Yes.
Aye.
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 Aye, so the first one passes. The second, the specific site is an appropriate location and of adequate size for the use?
Yes.
Yes.
Aye.
Aye, I think that's true, good, okay, so that passes. Number three, the use and developed, as developed, will not adversely affect the character of the area in which the proposed use will be located?
True.
Yes.
Agree.
Will.
True, and so that passes. There will be no nuisance or serious hazard to vehicles or pedestrians?
True.
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 Good, that passes. The use will not place excessive or undue burden on town services and facilities?
True.
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 True. The last one, number six, there would be no significant effect resulting from such use upon the public health, safety, and general welfare of the neighborhood in which the use would be located.
True.
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 True, good, okay.
Take the motion?
Yes, I'd accept a motion.
Take the motion, your community application is reserved.
And second?
Second.
All of those in favor for approving the Pine Gate Cooperative Community Solar two special exceptions?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, all right, congratulations, that passes, thank you so much.
Clarifying question?
Yes.
Is the access road limitation for the life of the project, for the life of the use, or just for the time of the construction?
I think that would be for the life of the use. Question?
Would they be allowed to appeal that, or is it just let that succeed? So I, I think what we're getting at is if there's some future need, for example, to provide access for emergency services to approve that road, would that be concluded by the condition on the solar project, or would that just be an additional process they need to go through?
I think it would be an additional process that they would need to go through, yes.
Unrelated to the special.
They could always take it to another application process, right, to be able to develop that road further for sure, right, nothing is ever in stone, right, right, and then they could take it and work with their neighbor and address the concerns of the abutter and be able to go, go forth with that.
And my understanding is that the condition specifically did state in the current location of.
In the current location.
Drive, so that, that does not say that the driveway could never.
Could never be anywhere, correct. Okay, yeah. Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, so next on our agenda, we have a special exception application for 26 High Street, we have a public hearing on a request from Charles Barker for a special exception application to. to permit construction of a detached garage, the accessory structure two feet from a side property line, where a 10-foot side setback is required, so... Alright, so is Charles Barker...
That's me.
Phil, would you like to come up and speak to this application?
Um, I'm just putting in a residential garage at the end of my driveway. I've talked to my neighbors, um, the batch elders who are closest to that side, and they were okay with it. I talked to Abby and Matt and they both agreed that that was fine, um, to put it there. They don't have a problem with it. I talked to Nick on the other side, even though he's on the other side of me. Uh, and it's gonna look very similar to his garage, um, building it. So it's got the same trim as my house, it's gonna have the same roof pitch, so it'll look... My goal is to make it look like it was built when the house was built in 1896. So it's gonna be, you know, look like, when you look at the house, that is gonna look like it was always there. It's my goal. That's really all I'm doing.
So questions for Mr. Barker from the, from the board?
Why can't it be 10 feet off?
Cause that'll... Cause the driveway is right... There's only about 14 feet from my living room window to the property line, cause it's a non-conforming lot in the center of town. So there's, it's a narrow lot. So if I had it 10 feet off, it would go down the driveway and then I'd have to bang a right and put the garage in the middle of my backyard. That's the, it's not, the lot's not that wide. Like, like I said, it's a non-conforming lot to begin with, cause it's less than... .3 acres or whatever, the non-conforming lot. One of the original houses on that road, or the road, you can went up down.
Yeah, I know the house.
Could you confirm you have both a municipal water and sewer and not an on-site septic?
Yeah, I'm in, right in the middle of town.
Okay. I mean, I thought so, I don't wanna assume.
Yeah. No, 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 I'm right on High Street, right on...
It is physically possible to construct a garage on this parcel without having an exception?
If, if I put it in the middle of my backyard, I guess, yeah.
Thank you.
That's the variance, right?
I still think I need a... Uh, I don't know. I, I don't know what all the rules are.
I know.
So, like...
It's hard to get to know them.
They change every couple of years and, you know... My neighbor in the back put in a whole new driveway without getting any permits or anything like that a couple of years ago, and, you know, there's been garages built here, there and everywhere, so...
It's hard. We haven't had consistent enforcement over the years, right, so... It's hard as a town to do that, and I think we're, we've been trying. Plymouth has been doing better at that.
So, I mean, I'm building a garage that's gonna look like it always has been there. So I'm not building some crazy dome tent. You know, it's gonna be, it's gonna look like an old garage. It's gonna, it's gonna match with the neighborhood. It's gonna look like Nick's, it's gonna be about the same width and about the same height. So I don't know if you've ever been down High Street, but there's the two houses that are exactly the same. They're actually mirror images built by the same person, by the, uh, by the same, same person.
Your house has a mirror image?
It's a mirror, yeah, so it's the exact...
On the other side.
It's actually the exact same, not, sorry, not mirror image, they're the exact same houses. So his garage is on, if you're looking at it, is on the right side of his house.
Yeah.
Cause his driveway is shared with, used to be Mrs., I think, uh, McDonald's house on the corner there, if you've been in Plymouth long enough, that double-decker house on the corner. Uh, so their driveway is a shared driveway into two garages that are side by each, that are like four feet apart. And then my garage is gonna be on the other side of our house, right at the end of the driveway. That's the plan, at least.
And your direct abutter, the lot to the, I guess, up the hill?
Yep, to the batch elders.
That's, that's the batch elders.
Yep, and then the lot that they now own was the one that burned down.
Earned, yeah.
Yeah. That was an interesting debt.
Yeah, I know. Sad.
Stephanie?
Yes, David.
You know, the plan didn't show much. What's, what's the status of the neighbors' buildings close to that line?
They wrote a, a letter of, uh, approval.
I can answer that if you want. So, uh, the batch elders' house is about 25 feet from, 20 feet from the property line on, on that side, on the side where the garage is going. But the house ends about where the back of my house ends, and then the garage is gonna be further back. So like on the diagonal from that garage to their back porch, it would probably be like maybe 30 feet.
David, there is a letter, um, with the application of support from the batch elders. I'm not sure if you saw it, so I'll, I'll go ahead and read it. Did you see it?
I did see it.
Oh, you did, okay.
What, my concern was setbacks have to do with fire safety, and, uh, if there's a building next door that's closed, that can be a problem.
Yeah, I don't think it, there is one, if you look at the drawing of the, with the greenery on it, it looks like the, what do we call that? Satellite view?
The batch elders' side yard would be directly, um...
There's probably 30 feet there.
I think NFPA 1 and 101 require 20 feet separation between houses. Or between structures, I think is the term they use.
A second one, Stephanie. The application stated that, uh, this is the same as the other houses on High Street. Do the other houses have garages as well?
There are some with, um, garages. If you look at the one on 122, the one on the corner there of, um, Langdon and High Street, they do have a corner that looks pretty, a garage that looks pretty close to, um, the back corner of that lot. And then the next property up from that corner, which would be his abutter to the east...
Which is Nick Mason's.
They, they have a garage that also abuts that other garage right in the corner of that lot. That looks like it violates both of the setbacks.
Yeah, it's four feet apart.
Yeah, you can tell.
Cause I helped him put the fence up. It was about, I think it was like, just about four feet.
You know, the challenge is, I think, in these lots that, you know, they've been there for a long time. Yeah. So I don't know that it's out of character for the neighborhood.
There is also a garage, um, down on Mrs., uh, Mrs. Rand's old house. I can't think of the last name of the people, the big green one. Uh, her little garage that's on the corner of their lot is maybe five feet from the house next door. So there's, uh, two little ones at the very end of High Street, and then there's that big Victorian that was Mrs. Rand's, and they have a garage at the bottom of their driveway that's, like, probably 10 feet from those butters as well.
And 10 feet is the setback, right? So...
Well, not, I thought it was from the...
Or from the garage, from the property line.
From the garage to the house.
Yeah.
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 No, it's right on the edge of the property line as well. And like I said, it's gonna be, it's gonna look like my neighbor's garage. It's about the same size. I think it's, I think, I went over and measured his is 20 feet and a few inches, and I'm gonna make mine 22 wide, but it'll be about the same height, uh, with the same roof pitch. It'll look very, very similar. Different color, but same shape, about.
Other questions from the, the board members? David? Okay, great, thank you. I'm gonna close the public hearing then on that.
Anybody online, Joseph?
Um, nobody has unmuted themselves anyway?
Can we have this one, um, letter of support, right? But have we received any other communications besides that letter?
Just the one letter.
Okay. The findings of fact, do we wanna move towards that?
The use is allowed by special exception?
It is? Okay. That's a good first finding of fact. Thank you for that, Tom. Others?
It's a compact lot where the existing driveway essentially abuts the property line.
Good, it sure does.
I think you have to find that it's a non-conforming lot.
That's a good one, David. What's the size?
Pre-existing, non-conforming lot.
It is a pre-existing, non-conforming lot.
Why is it non-conforming? Cause it's got a frontage or something, or what?
What makes it non-conforming, David?
Size, I believe.
Yeah.
Size, geometry.
Size.
Frontage.
Frontage.
Geometrically.
And what's the size of this lot? Does anybody have that anywhere? Did you guys see?
22.7 acres?
22.7, so it's about a quarter of an acre. It is, uh, in town, right? It is, um, right behind the university. The lots are of, of similar size, some a little bit bigger. Lots of them seem to be non-conforming.
There are multiple non-conforming lots.
Yeah, multiple non-conforming lots.
There are also multiple structures that do not fit within the updated current zoning restrictions.
Yeah.
That was the non-conforming.
That's the non-conforming, for sure.
You got that they signed a letter from the board?
Yes, I think that's a good one, that we have one letter of support. Um, and the desire, so with your question with the abutter, when you asked...
Oh, I, I just asked, cause there's no public present and no public opinion online.
Yeah.
So there's nobody here to speak against?
Either for or against.
But there was one other question you asked, and that was about why can't they go do the 10-foot setback, right?
The answer is you can.
You can.
You could build a conforming garage on this parcel, just not in the location that the applicant desires to place the garage.
Correct. Yeah.
I think it's relevant to mention that the, uh, letter of support is coming from the resident who has the...
Biggest impact.
...but, and the largest impact.
Stephanie?
Yes, David.
I think I make a find, I asked the board to make a finding that, um, having a garage is a reasonable use of the land, and the lot doesn't conform well without, uh, without allowing a special exception.
Explain what you mean by that, David.
The shape of the lot, he'd have to destroy his backyard to put a garage. A garage is a reasonable thing for a person to have in this day and age. And to do that, uh, in a way that doesn't encroach on the neighbor is reasonable under these circumstances.
I concur. I think that's a good finding, David.
It is well said, David, yes.
It is well said, though. It is possible to put it, right, but it would...
The applicant appro, uh, proposes this to be a, uh, oh shit, what do you call that? Aesthetic was pleasing.
Yes, the aesthetics would be within the character of, uh, the neighborhood and the house.
I think it's also...
Can you hear that, Dave? David, you hear that one?
No, I didn't. Thank you.
Oh, I said that the, the applicant proposes it to be an aesthetic situation here where he's gonna make it look like it fits right in with the rest of the neighborhood. He's not talking about building, you know...
I understand.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think it's also, uh, relevant that the proposed structure garage would not have, uh, direct infringement upon an, another structure, or another current structure, rather, um...
It's freestanding, you mean?
In terms, well, specifically in terms of the fire, uh, concern that David brought up. Which is legitimate.
One of the abutters, right? I think it would fall within, you know, close proximity to the house, but not to an abutter's property, right?
Within his house, yes, but not with the batch elders' house.
Correct. Not with the butters.
So there's a comfortable setback from the neighbor's house.
From the neighbor's house, yes.
The setback is specifically within the property line.
Mm-hmm.
Not, uh, current structure.
There is a good distance away from the property to the west, up the street. I'll say up the street. The batch elders. Um, this, I didn't hear any plans on making this, um, an accessory dr, or a, um, like a, an apartment or anything like that, so there's no bathroom or shower, anything going in this garage, no bedroom or in-law apartment or anything like that. So it just sounds like it's a garage, it's not gonna increase any kind of town services or anything like that. To my sense. Any other... Any other findings of fact?
Is it possible to open it up for one question?
One last question, sure, yeah, go ahead.
Let's make that two.
Okay, we got two questions for the applicant, so we'll open back up the public session.
Um, just to clarify, I meant to ask earlier, uh, I assume you'd be putting in electricity, is that accurate?
Um, yes, probably. I'm gonna, probably while I've got, the goal is while the dirtwork's being done is to dig a trench to put in a conduit to get power from the house, cause I've got a panel big enough to handle it. Then at some point, wire in power.
Sure.
Right now, there's just, between the batch elders' eyes, is a huge pine tree. I'm just trying to keep pine needles out of my car. Yeah, so eventually there'll be power to it, is the goal.
Understood, thank you for that. Um, second, piggybacking on that, um, is there any intention for water to be, uh, brought in?
Um, I hadn't thought of that, to be honest with you. That's a good idea, no.
It's good, but it's also a lot of work.
There's a spigot on the other side of the fence for like washing my car or something.
Sure.
Uh, but no, I, I didn't plan on putting water to it, just because it's not gonna be, uh, probably it won't be a heated space right away, if at all. Just cause money's kinda tight with the way lumber prices are going.
Yeah.
Only going up when they close the border.
Yeah.
And that's where all the pine come from, so, uh, yeah, so...
Perfect.
I'm not planning on doing anything more than having a garage.
Awesome. Thank you.
And Peter has a question?
Yeah, um, two feet?
Yeah.
How'd you get to two feet? Why is it two feet, not 18 inches, three feet, four feet?
Um, so I, where the existing driveway goes, where it ends at the back of my house is, that is about, uh, 20... that is about twenty-seven inches, depending on how you hold your tape measure, to the fence. So I figure I can't, so I just did two feet because that seemed like a nice round number. You know, I was sitting with Matt outside the Batchelders', and I was like, hey, I wanna put a garage here. What do you think? It's gonna be at the end of the driveway, it's gonna be about right here, so it'll be about two feet. You know, it, it's gonna be about two feet plus or minus an inch or two, that like depends on how you hold your tape. And like I said, before I did this application, I went and talked to my neighbors, because that's the right thing to do. And if Matt and Abby said, well, I don't know, then I, I probably moved up.
Is there a fence on your common line right now?
Yeah, it's a...
Chain link.
A chain link fence. So I went off of that fence.
You building this thing on a slab, or?
Yeah, it's gonna be an Alaskan slab, or monolithic slab.
Thank you.
All right, we'll close back that session. All right, so can we move towards, moving through the criteria? Do we feel like we have enough finding of facts, or is there any more that people wanna add? Don't wanna stop us.
I'm good.
Others? Any other findings of fact, David?
I think you've covered the fact that it's not gonna have any residential use, it's just for the, as a garage. That's fine.
And I don't know if it's been put in there, but that, the Batchelders', yes, we did put that in, did we not? That the butters?
Butters put a letter in support of the application.
Yep.
I'd make a motion, we approve the findings of fact.
Okay. Second, anybody?
Second.
All those in favor to accept the findings of fact?
Aye.
Say aye.
Aye.
Tom?
Aye, I was here.
Aye, okay, sorry, I didn't hear ya. Okay, so the finding of facts are accepted by the board, so let's move through the special All right, so let's, let's look at the consider, the conditions. First, the proposed uses shall be only those allowed in this ordinance by special exception?
True.
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 True. Number two, the specific site is an appropriate location and of adequate size for the use?
True.
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 True. Number three, the use as developed will not adversely affect the character of the area in which the proposed use will be located?
True.
True. There will be no nuisance or serious hazard to vehicles or pedestrians?
True.
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 True. The use will not play excessive or undue burden on town services and facilities?
True.
True.
True. And there would be no significant effect resulting from such use upon the public safety, the public health, safety, and general welfare of the neighborhood in which the use would be located?
True.
True.
True. Okay, so let's entertain a motion to...
Make a motion, we approve the application presented?
Aye, Charlie?
Second.
And all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye. All right, congratulations, Charlie. You've got yourself a special exception for a garage.
Great. Is there some sort of notice or letter I'll get from the town so I can pull the code?
Yeah.
Yep, a notice of decision will be available within five days. It will be signed by the zoning board and will outline the facts and the approval. And we can send that to you via email unless you prefer conventional mail or some other means.
You have some mail, it's a hard copy that I can, it'd be great. I've lost electronic stuff before, so I still call it the dump, and I still like paper copies, so thanks.
There you go.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you for bringing this forward, right? I appreciate it. All right, so we're getting close to the end of our meeting. I think we just have this, any unfinished business? I know we have the new business for Fred Kelsey.
No, no other unfinished business on my end.
So, and Joseph, for this, I, I know that the select board members usually approve ZBA members for, so we wouldn't vote on this, correct?
Yeah, it's a, it's a good question. So this is actually a new policy that the select board has adopted where prior to voting on the appointment of a potential new member, they seek a recommendation from the board that the person is attempting to join. So often, the board in question will just take a vote to recommend or not recommend.
That sounds great.
The board could also, by consensus, it really varies a little bit board to board, but that's the, that's the process that, at least at present, the select board is asking from...
So they're looking for a recommendation for us? Okay, that sounds great. We can give them that.
I'd move to recommend for...
Stephanie?
Yes?
I want you to know that Fred Kelsey did, did call me and asked, we had a lengthy discussion about how the zoning board works, what preparation he needed to be able to participate, and he fully understands his responsibility of being a member of the board, is enthusiastic about participating. And I, I encouraged him to go to Joseph and start the process, and apparently he succeeded.
That's great. That's how we find our best members.
Tom, you were saying?
Jonathan made a motion that we recommend him to the select one.
And then Malick says...
I'll second that.
Great, okay. So all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Great, okay, Fred Kelsey, please join us, right? We recommend that to the select board, hopefully they will concur.
Excellent, I will let them know of the board's recommendation, and they will, I imagine, vote on that at their next meeting. Typically, they do it at the next available meeting, if they can accommodate it on their agenda, so I expect we'll have his nomination soon.
And we welcome him, and then that will give Tom a little flexibility.
Make a motion to adjourn.
No. May I offer some more? Just one comment?
Yes.
I was disappointed in the garage application for a special exception. I think it was woefully inadequately stated, and without his, he shouldn't have to explain things in detail, they should be in the application. And I, I held my tongue in saying we should reject this just out of hand, because the fellow came forward and presented his case. But I, I think I should make a comment like that.
I concur, David, and it's hard, I go back and forth with it. I do think people don't always understand the rules, but I would have liked to see a more complete application. I think sometimes people in town don't always understand the rules and the expectations.
That's a good point, David. I think procedurally, we should have, you know, within the process of it, even before we get to finding of facts, is the application complete or is it not? And if it's not complete, we should not go forward.
I did ask Joseph with that at the beginning.
Oh, you did?
I did, if we could do that. But no, no, it wasn't like it was before the meeting.
Oh.
Right? And I know, because we've had this before, and maybe that we just decide that that's a standard procedure, if the application isn't complete, that we motion to continue it to the next meeting. And that's, I think, procedurally how we could handle that.
Well, I would go one step further. I would think procedurally, Joseph or, or planning staff could administratively determine if it's complete or not, and it doesn't even get to the board unless it's complete? Period.
And I did speak with the applicant and advise him, you know, even before...
I saw that in your notes, yeah.
Yeah, I did advise him that, you know, but ultimately, you know, as it, as it is currently, as the, as the, you know, as I understand the bylaws and the zoning, I, I can't, you know, administratively prevent someone from bringing their application forward to the ZBA. I could, I can certainly advise them that, you know, I think there needs to be more detail, I can offer to help explain the criteria, how you might understand and respond to them, but when someone says, I, I don't want that, if they decline to discuss any of those things, I really don't, I haven't, at least historically under the current rules and regulations, felt that I have the authority to say, no, this can't go to the zoning board, but that perhaps could be a, could be something we look into at some point.
I think we should adopt a policy, and the policy should be exactly what Stephanie said. The board finds that the application is incomplete and doesn't stand on its own feet. It doesn't have adequate information that would allow it to be approved without anybody making any statements, then it ought to be continued to the next meeting until that information is brought forward.
Can we maybe say adequate and inaccurate information?
Well, I think accuracy is something the board has to determine.
Yeah.
But at least enough information that if the person didn't even show up, it could have been approved.
Yes, we couldn't have approved that application if the applicant hadn't shown up.
No.
Right?
Some common language in other land use ordinances are completeness and compliance. So we could have easily determined that the application as presented was both not complete and also non-compliant, for lack of information. That could have been a finding of fact.
And the planning board does have a process built into the site plan and subdivision regulations where they first do review whether an application is complete and formally take a vote on that. But that, that's sort of housed in their site plan and subdivision regs, but that is certainly a sensible thing for the board to consider, I think.
So that would be like an additional step that we just took before we sought feedback from people who are bringing forth the application? We would say, is the application complete and compliant?
Yeah.
I'll second Peter's motion to adjourn.
I'll second Peter's motion.
Sorry, Dave.
That's quite all right.
Bring it with you next time.
Okay.
It's a big vote.
Do we need to, can I just ask one question before we go?
Sure.
If we wanted to do something like that, do we need to vote on that as a board?
I think we should, adopt a policy.
And we do have our rules of procedure, which is actually another item that I know we're, you know, looking at, we're under, you know, a discussion of a motion to adjourn now, but there, there was another item that I had looked at with regards to the zoning board's rules of procedure, with regards to the timeline before the meeting on which the applicant is expected to submit an application. As we did run into that issue right around December, where some of our newspaper public notice deadlines don't align well with the application's initial deadlines, so we had some cases where we, we never like to do this, we only do this if there is literally no way, but we had to run it in a different paper, The Sun, which of course, you know, the Record Enterprise is really the one that, that people read, but we have to legally get it in a, in a newspaper. So if we had the timeline for submitting an application in advance of the meeting, such that even when the, the Record Enterprise, which is a weekly paper, is on their extended holiday deadlines, we could still get a notice in their paper, that, that's something else that could be looked at in the bylaws.
You know, probably, we still, that if you didn't feel the application was complete and legible for you, and, you know, understandable, you'd just say, you'd just express that, and if, you know, three members felt that way, then it would just be bummed out or whatever. I mean, that's totally reasonable.
Can I suggest you add it to the next agenda as an, as an item? We can discuss the policy, we can frame the policy, vote on the policy.
Be able to adjust the policy internally?
Can we send those out with us with the next application?
Absolutely.
The next agenda and everything, put it on our agenda, and then send out those zoning board rules of procedure? And then we can look at them and kind of think about those two issues around wordsmithing.
Absolutely.
I might point out that Joseph and I had the discussion over how far we should extend the application, the timeline for the application, and if we moved it out, wasn't it two weeks, Joseph? If we made the timeline two weeks instead of ten days, we wouldn't have a problem?
In most cases, we wouldn't have a problem with two weeks. The, the only one time a year that we would is when the Record Enterprise has their Christmas pages, which is, they run on slightly, I would have to check back, it might have been like sixteen days or some very strange number of days. I would have to look back into my notes as to exactly, but that would address it in almost every, in almost every instance throughout the year.
Can I suggest, can I suggest that Joseph draft the two policies for the board to discuss at the next meeting?
That would be great.
This is agenda, perfect.
That would be great. Adjourned.
Now we vote on Tom's motion.
All right, Tom, anybody want a second? Tom's motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor, we're adjourned.